At the bottom it says all housing spaces are required to have a to have natural light and fresh air of eight percent or four air for each room.
With the bedroom like, for the, for the, do you have two occupants or more? You have two kids with bunk beds. Does he have to have seven square feet or more?
Two hundred.
Two hundred, you mean a bunk bed?
It'd be a hundred square foot per occupant. It doesn't give any exceptions on that.
Up to two, except for.
Up to two, a hundred square feet.
It's seventy-four, two parents and two kids.
No, 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 I mean, what is it, if you want it to be fifty to one, a hundred for two, is that correct?
Uh, seventy for one, seventy for one, and if there's more than one, then it drops down to fifty square feet per person. So if you have two, it's a hundred, if you have three, it's a hundred and fifty, if you have four, it's two hundred.
What happens if they don't have the, the website to do it?
Well.
My house has small rooms.
Right, this, this, excuse me, I apologize, Gail, I might have been misleading. This is for development of rentals. This is so if someone buys a commercial, commercial property in Market Street, wants to develop the second, third floor. Okay, they want to develop this.
Right.
This is the standards they have to follow.
But tell everybody what the IRC stands for.
Oh, International Residential Building Code, I'm sorry.
So this, we're not just making this up.
No, no, this is not.
From the international code.
Just bringing, yes, we're bringing our ordinance up too soon.
And what was that number again?
I'm sorry?
One seventy-five point seventy-eight.
Yeah, one seventy-five seventy-eight, is that where we were at?
Okay, back to them, somebody that has a small house with small rooms, like, when I say something happens and I just want to rebuild my, my structure, according to this, I can't, I can't, I can't.
This has got to be a rental?
It's a rental property.
Strictly rental. Are we getting in trouble then, are we selectively targeting people?
No, because we're following IRC, the International Residential Code. So if they would come, if you would come with a plan to rebuild your structure, you would have to meet these right away, these guidelines. We're just looking at development of rentals.
We're just updating our code.
Right, we're just, we're just bringing our ordinance up to meet the current IRC standards.
Any other questions?
I, I have a question, Joe Bartell, which, which version of the IRC are you using?
Uh, we're still using the two thousand and nine.
Okay, the minimum square foot in that is three hundred for a one bedroom, three hundred square feet.
No.
And it's actually going lower in the newer ones, if you adopt, when you adopt two thousand twelve and two thousand fifteen, the minimum square footage actually goes down.
The state has not approved anything since two thousand nine.
Two thousand twelve is the current one.
You do it, Mike, and we can change it if it has to.
Sure, sure.
Um, I guess to clarify, I think, Mike, what you're saying is the IRC standard is the amount per bedroom, is that correct? Or is it in regard to minimum square footage?
Minimum square footage, per.
Because what I have read is that the minimum household square footage is three hundred for one resident and four hundred for two.
Is that bedrooms?
No, it's not bedrooms, that's the apartment.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right, and we have that in our ordinance, that four hundred square feet per apartment, except those of, uh, hold on a minute.
I think he's just talking about bedrooms now.
Yeah, we, we have, we have, we have six hundred square foot for apartments, houses and conversion apartments. We have four square feet for apartments, those apartments that are designed for occupants exclusive by one person. Three hundred, three hundred square feet, oh, sorry, by, for one person, it's three hundred square feet. For conversion apartments, it's four hundred square feet, and for... Six hundred square feet, case apartment, houses and conversion apartments. Four square feet for apartments.
Yeah, drop that from twelve to nine. Everybody knows what was in the book.
That's correct, that's correct, and that's, that's part of the, that's part two of this. Uh, one seventy-five ninety, used to be the central business, minimum apartments should be twelve hundred, we dropped it down to nine, or, I should say, we're proposing to drop it down to nine hundred.
So this isn't citywide?
No, nine hundred square foot only pertains to central business.
If that's where you want your smallest apartments, that makes no sense.
Didn't we actually move this up years ago?
Yep, it was raised to twelve hundred foot, because I think, my understanding was that they wanted to have
Luxury apartments?
Big apartments, yeah, or make, to bring the business people into the community.
That didn't work though.
We're dropping it to nine hundred, to make it easier for the business people on Market Street, if they want to put more apartments in, and, and it's, so we've dropped it to nine hundred square feet. Megan?
I'm sure, Megan.
It's, it's now time for...
Yeah, no, we're talking about this, yeah.
Okay, I guess, um, as, as a landlord and being a pro of revitalization, I actually would like to see in the central business district that reduced to the IRC standard, which is that, four, I'm gonna say four hundred, to generalize as far as an apartment. Uh, because what, what they're talking about is central business, business is redeveloping those upper stories, um, those upper floors where we want to have more tenants there. The people that are, you know, singles or young couples who don't mind parking, you know, two blocks away and plan to, you know, walk, have a walkable community, be able to walk to the grocery store, walk to the pharmacy, walk to do their shopping and to work. So I think that if we do reduce that more dramatically, I think you're gonna see a bigger change, you're gonna see more investment in refurbishing those upper levels and those downtown storefronts, there are a lot of that, it's all unused space right at this time, a lot of it's unused space right now, so.
One of the other things we looked at when we were, the more apartments you put in one of those buildings, you're not going to be able to meet the standards because you're not going to have a window, an egress in every bedroom. All right, so I mean, that's, it would, if, and, and if you go to that to six hundred foot or whatever, and, uh, you end up putting eighty apartments in, uh, probably five of them aren't going to be able to be egressed to the outside for a bedroom window.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think what, I, I actually done a lot of research on it this year, and, um, I think what we were looking at is you might be able to fit, at the four hundred, you might be able to fit three apartments per second story, which doesn't seem too much, it, or doesn't seem like it's too small at that point, I wouldn't think. But, um, and, and, you know, maybe you kind of like fit two per level because you need, you know, windows in the rear.
We'll, we'll look into it if we can, but if you can, if we get guaranteed from the landlord that it's not going to be no more than a, a single person or two people, it's not going to be a family with three or four kids living in it, that, that's, that, we're just looking for trouble then, we're looking for a lot, a lot of liability problems.
Okay, thank you. And another, one of the other reasons why, um, we're trying to keep the square footage in central business a little bit higher is, um, you know, I know the revitalization has been working very hard to build up our, our central business and make it a very vibrant, uh, place. By keeping this at a higher square footage, we're gonna keep the congregation, so to speak, of tenants from pulling out their folding lawn chairs and sitting in front of the store at eight o'clock at night with their favorite beverage, you know, that's sort of gonna take away from what we're developing, sort of looking at, and that's another reason why we dropped it from twelve hundred, but we kept that at a reasonable nine hundred, uh, to try to eliminate that also.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, I'm with that motion.
Reigner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister? Persing? Shitman?
Yeah. I can just record, is anybody in here that owns property downtown, Megan, other than you, just talk out around other people, because we've got thirty days till we pass this again, I'd be interested if anyone wants to come to next meeting, just to get different viewpoints on that.
Okay.
Thank you. One seventy-five seventy-three?
Yep, one seventy-five seventy-three. This one pertains to transmission receiving towers. As you all know, we recently had a monopole put in the city of Sunbury up on, by the Regent Street area, uh, basically because we had nothing to stop it. Uh, I know Breonna and her father worked very hard, uh, with the law firm, Fort Horizon, to put some regulations down, but because we didn't have any regulations, um, it couldn't be stopped. But we're putting this in now that we, uh, we're adding the ordinance that could prevent more towers, or severed towers coming into the city limits.
Yeah, and, and basically that's it, the, the, it was pretty much, where do we get any? If the tower's a hundred foot high, you need a hundred foot laydown radius.
Correct. To protect it.
If that protected, so I'm with my motion, this new ordinance, we put it to a first reading?
In a second.
Eister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reigner?
Yes.
Henry?
One seventy-five one oh three, permanent signs.
That's correct, one seventy-five one oh three. Um, we're changing letter A two from three square feet to six square feet in all residential districts. And the reason for that is to support more home occupation. And then one seventy-five one oh four, general regulations, the size of any projecting signs should not exceed six square feet. And I'm not sure exactly what that was off the top of my head, I didn't have that one in my head. And then, uh, with that, one seventy-five one oh four G, no sign should be permitted that rotates flash immediately. We already have that in our ordinance, we're adding, or emit a jug full of excessive noise created by electronic current or air movement. With today's day and age of electronics and everything, uh, before it used to be like that, it caused obstruction, now it could be anything, so we just wanted to cover that, cover our bases. And then, our next one is one seventy-five one oh four J. This one here, this, this ordinance replaces ninety-nine fifteen, which we already had in place, posting restrictions. And basically, all we did was we took ninety-nine fifteen, added to ordinance one seventy-five one oh four J, with an addition of, when such times are permitted, they should not be posted sooner than thirty days before the date of the event advertised, and they shall not remain posted for more than five days after the date of event is advertised.
Why must we wait five days for them to take it down?
I'm sorry, sir?
Why must we wait five days for them to take it down?
Oh, just, you know. In case they forget one, or, you know, I, I've been involved with fundraisers where at the end of the night, you know, I just want to sit down and take a breather, and the next day I'm too pooped to do anything, so.
At least it gives some guideline, maybe, right now.
I think in the ordinance we looked at, it's up ten days.
Ten days, yes, yeah, yes.
Yeah. And the last part?
And then, we added K, another letter K, advertising painted upon or displayed upon a building, structure, wall or rock surface shall be regarded as a sign, and the regulations pertaining thereto shall apply. So basically, if you want to paint a mural, mural on the side of your building, that's considered a sign, and you would have to, uh...
Can't be more than six foot?
All depends what district you're, if you're in central business or middle of business, up to a hundred and fifty square feet. We just changed, we just upped the sizes in residential, um, from two square feet to six square feet.
All right, but I'm saying if we had a downtown building, the side of a building, someone went to a mural on it, we're saying we couldn't do it with this.
No, that's not what we're saying at all. What we're saying is, it would be considered, it would have to meet the guidelines of the sign if it's painted on, compared to a poster or a wooden, wooden framed, same, same concept. And, uh, last but not least, uh, letter L, in all districts, only those residential, excuse me, in all districts, only those residential signs and commercial industrial identification signs referring directly to services provided, are materials or products made, sold or displayed, including specials, events and fundraisings on the premises to which it refers, shall be permitted.
So what kind of signs would that?
Well, um, sandwich board signs, for example, uh, has nothing to do with this, it's kind of a coincidence that it happened. Uh, we just recently had an individual put a sandwich sign, um, at the corner of Fort and Market. An individual with a wheelchair hit that sign, went into traffic and could have been seriously hurt, luckily nobody was hurt, um, and everything worked out happily, but that, that's sort of the, uh, what we were looking at, to prevent.
Does that sort of affect the banners that are on the chain link fences coming in the city and stuff like that?
Well, that's, that's all state.
Well, unless it's a fundraising event, you want to be on the premises that you're advertising.
That is correct, that's, that's what this is saying, if you advertise on the premises.
So this precludes political signs?
I'm sorry, sir?
This precludes political signs, if I want to put a political sign?
No, if you look at posting restrictions, it says, uh, no, your political signs are fine, you just can't, you just can't put them in any
Public.
Public, public area.
It's be on private property.
Has to be on, has to be on a private property.
How about a Schickelmees School District advertising for a play, they put a four by eight?
Well, we do, um...
It was on private property, I think it's permitted, Michael.
Most, most of them, like, we have them on, like, fences, so they're out of the way, they're not actually in the road, walkway. I just put them up yesterday, I was wondering.
This, this, this L says, in all districts, only those residential signs and commercial industrial identification signs referring directly to services provided, or materials or products made, sold or displayed, including specials, events and fundraising, on the premise to which it refers, shall be permitted.
That's correct.
So if I... If I have a Merry Christmas sign in my front yard, I don't, I don't produce that at my house, I don't.
You're, you're not advertising for any type of special event?
I know what this says, this, this says, any sign, only, I think this needs to be rewritten. It's not clear to me that, that this says, that's what we're, it says, all, only residential signs,
Who?
Only residential signs, commercial industrial identification signs referring directly to services provided, or materials or products made or sold or displayed, including specials, events and fundraising, on the premise to which it refers, shall be permitted.
That's correct, um, example. I have a bar, Rogers Bar, and I want to have, you know, Pennington, I want to advertise it in the public. This does not allow me to take it to Fort and Market and hang a banner, or take it to, uh, Second and Walnut and hang a banner. I can only hang a banner on my establishment where that event is occurring.
Can I put that banner in front of my house to advertise it for you?
No, that's the, on the premises where.
So could I put a banner of advertising for a play for the Schickelmees High School?
No.
See, that's a problem, you have to have the church advertising, it's not profitable. Could I advertise a chicken barbecue for the church in front of my house? That's penalizing some unprofitable organizations.
Yeah, but you know, I think I deleted something that, may I just have a second, please?
Yeah. Hey, Rick, we're not putting you up.
No, no, no.
Why don't you just bring this one back?
It affects down on French fruit.
Not steak.
I know, but, does, does it affect them?
No, steak, we don't have it.
Okay, so, there's just seems a lot of nonprofits that use that.
Well, actually, it does affect, it's in the city of Sunbury.
Correct, that's my question.
My question, yeah, Pendak pays it down, my question was, coming in, a stranger coming in from another town, the city of Sunbury, with all those billboards, whatever, whatever is on there, how do you think it looks? Does it look attractive?
I've just seen it for years, that, it, to me, it's just I pass by it, but I think there's more nonprofits that use it than they do profits.
Well, there's, there's businesses from Snyder County put stuff in that fence.
I know, I can't.
I want to know, I have my, my board that sits outside every single day, I never put it in the handicap spot, I would carry it over to the sidewalk. So you're saying I can't put that up?
If it's on your premises, if it's on your premises.
Actually, the city sidewalk, it's not.
It's in front of your premises, though. What I'm saying, Lori, is you can't take that sign and take it to Front Market and put it there.
No, it's too heavy.
Well, I'm just, I'm just using that as an example.
And I can't put signs up anywhere else, like, advertising, like, my hayride, I have nine businesses involved in that hayride, you know what I mean? And they were all over the place.
Now, each business could advertise on your.
I think I found the answer to your question.
Right.
Okay, I just got a little lost on, on the ordinance, I apologize. If we reflect back to one seventy-five one oh four J, it says posting restrictions, no person should post or fix any notice, post or other paper or device calculated to attract the attention of the public by lamp posts, public utility, pole or shade tree or on any public structure, building or open public lane. Sometimes may be authorized by required, or required by law, or may be authorized by city council. So I believe your question was, or, sorry, Kevin's question was, can I advertise for the high school's play? The answer would be yes, with permission from city council to do so.
Well, you're taking away my freedoms, bud.
Yep.
I, you know, if I want to put a sign, if I want to put a sign in my front yard that advertises something for a church or the Cub Scouts or something, why do I have to come to city council and get permission to put it there?
I, I don't think we're looking at residential properties on this, it just went there, it's all, it's all has to do with commercial.
It says all public.
Once, once it's, once it's passed into law, then I have, then, then people are going to have to fight it, let's make it right before we pass it.
What's clearly, it says public, it says public, public land or space.
Lamp posts, public utility, poles, shade trees.
Don't mention anything about residential structure.
Well, didn't you just enter a couple of minutes ago that you can't, or whoever can't advertise something in front of their house for somebody else?
The SRI is trying to bring businesses to the downtown, we're working really hard to do that, and this is going to be taking away from bringing businesses to the downtown. I realize you can't hang banners up all over the place because now Pendak comes and cuts them down because of an incident that happened, and I realize that, but we still need to bring businesses in the downtown, you have to give some kind of leniency here, we are, not much, not much.
Well, how would we table those, just more research? Lori, is that okay?
Yep.
With this ordinance, it's, it's coming out, if you want to have a yard sale, you can't put signs up anywhere.
Right, except your own property.
Except your own property, so how you can advertise, like, you use newspapers.
We'll see, but if you would take the yard signs down, we probably wouldn't be here talking about this.
I, I understand that, but every day they put them on telephone poles, lamp posts, everything else, and they stay there forever.
I just say, notice the, well, public utility has a rule against that, you can't post anything.
I know that they do it anyway.
How about, uh, one seventy-five one oh three, that part of this also?
That has to do with billboards.
Okay?
That's, basically, we're redesigning the old billboard ordinance, and I prefer not to talk or read it out loud.
Actually, Mike, that doesn't really, it's rare we have an application for a billboard.
Right.
I don't.
Where we, where we put one, new one.
There again, that ordinance is weak, we wanted to build it up so we're not caught like we were with the tower. Is that the next page also? Yes, two pages long.
What are we going to do with this?
Oh.
Mike, what are you going to do with this billboard?
You want to have a first reading on it?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to look over it, go and table it at the next meeting, that's fine.
How about if we hold this one too, because I've, I've never looked at this one.
Go for it, go hold one up.
I don't know where you put one up, that's one, I guess I will. That'll help?
Yep, and that's, that's just a, uh, that's just a word change, so we keep the, the city out of lawsuits, um, in two thousand, October two thousand and ten, um, President Obama made illegal for anybody to use the word retardation, he replaced it with intellectual disabilities. And one seventy-five four C, which is our mental health, uh, establishment ordinance, we, uh, had that in there, and we just were changing the wording from, to the word intellectual.
Intellectual disability.
Right. That's all, it's just a word change.
Your motion is that?
That's Rosa's wall, by the way.
In a second.
Eister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Reigner?
Yes.
Can I see the last one here we have? This is under, what is this under? Thirty-five police force, we have a section, a sentence in here, it says a police force in the city of Sunbury shall consist of fifteen members. This here and after designated are as many as, from time to time comprise its membership, and it's no reason to put that on, we haven't, we haven't, haven't had fifteen police officers in thirty years, so. Our goal is to eliminate this. I'll make a motion to eliminate it.
Okay.
Is this, on the Third Class Three Code, are we required to have that, from the state?
You can, you can have as many officers as one and a half, we can have seventeen, we can have.
This is an article.
This is a city, this is a city.
I, I know, but, it don't, doesn't produce the Third Class Code, so we have to have them in one of the thirteen?
No.
Okay.
I don't know why that was ever put there, to be honest with you, that's, that's been in there for thirty years, I've been involved, I don't know why, it never came.
I'm glad I wanted to ask that.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Persing?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reigner?
Yes.
Henry? Eister?
Good job, Rick, Mike, good job. Uh, next on the agenda is FEMA appealed, proposed flood hazard, and I'm just, I'm not, I'm surely not going to read all this to you. What's happened, if you remember back in two thousand and eleven, when FEMA came in and we had to get certified, remember the flood wall and, and the flood system and that stuff? And we had to get certified, and that cost us, I shouldn't say I, it cost us, I say Sunbury because municipal authority took most of that, but it was somewhere over five hundred thousand dollars. And that was only four years ago. Well, now they have upgraded the engineering analysis to reflect that one percent annual chance flood elevation has increased by amounts ranging from, and that's as far as I'm going. What I'm asking of the council tonight is, these, all this documentation has come to me as the mayor, it's, clarity has to go back to the municipal authority who wants to make appeals on it. So I, I want to make a motion to give me the authority to send this back with our support to municipal authorities so they can make their proper appeals.
Right, just to add to the, the, yes, the maps, I didn't see the map yet, they're giving a map printed up by Cedar College. Areas like, up around North Fourth Street, where the plaza is, that'd be the flood plain. Lower section of Sunbury, there's areas, uh, there's a, in around, I don't think where I even, I live, places we have never seen no water. According to the elevations, and the federal government, you know, they're in Washington or somewhere, they make the decision, so. Basically, everything they are saying within the city limits, we're going to appeal. Yes, well, authorities want to appeal because it's one effect, anybody selling or buying a property in that locality, even though they never had water for the last since the walls were in existence, they'll be classified to have flood insurance.
Well, the water area has the, the flood pit, the pond in it, that's what we built that whole area, that's what the drainage is for.
Lower section, yes. It just, uh...
But, and, and clarity, we could never come up with a half million dollars to do another study, so anyway.
Okay. Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reigner?
Yes.
Uh, free parking Market Street and all metered streets, John.
Okay, holiday parking, right, for, for the month of December, we're actually starting next week, what, next?
This Friday.
Friday.
Right, this Friday, uh, through the end of December, free parking, uh, not in the parking lots, but in, uh, Market Street and Meter Street.
Somebody called you a Scrooge, John, they're going to give a free parking.
Just giving money away left to right.
Eister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reigner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Approved the pay invoices, John.
Okay, we have, uh, lots of invoices, uh, one thing I do need to tell, uh, members of council is that we have a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents in general fund expenses. Uh, we have about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in the account, so we will not be able to pay all of our bills immediately. So I'm going to ask that we approve these invoices for payment, uh, and direct the city treasurer to pay those essential ones immediately, and pay the bills as... and direct the city treasurer to pay those essential ones immediately and pay the bills as soon as we can. Thankfully, it's about four thousand dollars in the red right now. We knew we were gonna run into this at the end of the year, we talked about this all the way back in September. The, Mr. Troop and I had a lengthy discussion on it on Friday afternoon. We still hoping that we can bring this in before, by the end of the year and not have a negative bounce, but right now we have a negative bounce, so make a motion to approve those that are essential and immediately, and pay the rest as soon as we have the funds.
Chriseng?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reigner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we have two liquid fuels, we have a two hundred thousand dollar bill to pay for paving on Chesnut Street, and we have six thousand three, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents of other miscellaneous liquid fuels, and we do have the money to pay those, I make a motion that we pay those bills.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reigner?
Yes.
Henry? Eister? Chriseng?
Yes.
Tackling exoneration, John.
We have a bunch of, people are just dying left and right. Uh, we have ten deceased, some as far back as two thousand nine, so obviously, we didn't get our record, record keeping up to date, but we have ten deceased, one duplicate, one low income, and two who paid their taxes elsewhere. I make a motion that we desonerate these individuals from paying their taxes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Reigner?
Yes.
Henry? Eister? Chriseng?
Yes.
And may I ask a question?
Audience comment, yes.
Um, Regina Russell, community activist, how are residents in Sunbury able to get away with not paying taxes for several years? How do they slip through the cracks like that?
Once, once the, once the year ends and they become delinquent, we have no further authority to collect those, and so we turn those over to an agency to collect those for us. That agency works those cases as long as they can, and if they're unable to collect them, they come back to us and there's just no, we have, we have no further authority. So, once a, once an agency has worked to collect those, usually for three or four years, they're actually considered uncollectible. In some cases like this, the people have passed away and so forth, but I can tell you that the city probably loses fifty thousand dollars a year in these kinds of taxes. One of the reasons we have is that people move in here, and they live there for six months or seven months, and then they're evicted there, and then they move over there, and just about the time we found out that they lived there, now they live over there, and then when we find, about the time we find out they live over there, they moved ignoring. So, we have an ongoing problem in the city, collecting the, the personal taxes, and we've had this for many, many years, and it's almost impossible to keep track of where they are.
So instead of writing the taxes off, and I don't know if you do that or not at the end of the year, or whenever you decide to, we don't sell, the city doesn't sell that property so that they can try to get the money back on taxes?
I'm sorry, these are personal taxes, Regina, this is your, this is your personal tax, it's not hot property.
That's ours.
I'm sorry, I, I should have made that clear.
It's not unique to Sunbury.
No.